I will speak about three main topics. First, cytoarchet tonics. Then, at the molecular level, receptor archet tonics. And finally, fiber tracks and the connectome. Cytoarchet tonics means what is beyond MRI? What is beyond the cortical ribbon, which we can see in MRI? On the left side, you see a routine in vivo MRI at 3 Tesla with a spatial resolution of 1mm isotropic. If we magnify the region of the primary visual cortex here, we will see not very much at 3 Tesla. When we do it at 9.4 Tesla, we see a lot more. We can clearly see the Janari stripe here, which characterizes the primary visual cortex. And when we compare this 9.4 Tesla image and magnify part of the primary visual cortex, we can really see different cortical layers. For instance, the layer 4B, which is the Janari stripe region, darker here in the 9.4 Tesla image. But if we compare it with histology, we see that there is much more behind such an image, even at 9.4 Tesla. We can see the different layers, the six layers of the cerebral cortex. And in case of the primary visual cortex, the highly differentiated layer 4 with 4A, 4B, where the Janari stripe is here, the dark part here at low magnification, and layer 4C, layer 5, and layer 6, the typical construction of the neocortex. The complexity of the cerebral cortex becomes clear when we realize the sheer number of nerve cells. 19 to 21 times 10 to the power of 9 cells are found in the cerebral cortex of the human being. When we look at the cerebral cortex and we visualize pyramidal cells by gene transfer of green fluorescent protein, then we can see that the nerve cells have long prolongations here, the dendrites, and the dendrites are the input part of the nerve cell, and they have also axons leaving the cortex, the output via the axons. When we look at single nerve cells and the contacts, then we can see here a synapse at higher magnification, a synapse between axon of a presynaptic cell, synaptic cell, and the dendrite of a postsynaptic cell. And this synapse is characterized by transmitter vesicles in the presynaptic part of the synapse and by transmitter receptors in the postsynaptic part of the synapse. At electron microscopic levels, we have here the presynaptic part with the numerous vesicles and the postsynaptic part with this postsynaptic density. And I will come back to these dark spots, which are single molecules, receptor molecules. The human cortex has approximately 20 times 10 to the power of 13 synapses, which is an incredible number, and it illustrates the complexity of this structure. Let's come back to cytoarchitecture, some principles. The motor cortex can be roughly subdivided into the primary motor cortex or Area 5 of Brodmann, which is more or less completely buried in the central sulcus. In this primary motor cortex of the human brain is characterized by the giant BAD cells, which are labeled here in layer 5. Then we have a premotor cortex on the pre-central gyrus. And this premotor cortex shows a completely different cytoarchitecture. We don't have here the BAD cells. We have medium-sized pyramidal cells. But in contrast to the primary motor cortex, we have relatively large pyramidal cells in layer 3. These differences are differences in cytoarchitecture, and they are the basis for the parcelation of the cortex into different cytoarchet tonic areas. It's not always as simple as here. For instance, if you look to Area 44 of Brokaw's region and you compare it with Area 45, it's much more difficult to define a clear separation between both cortical areas. This led to a controversy about brain maps, which lasted for nearly 100 years. Here, the classical brain map of Brodmann, which you can see in all the textbooks. And here, the brain map of von Eckonomo and Koskinen's. And the map of Kempe from 1905. And finally, the von Bonine and Bailey map. And if you compare the von Bonine and Bailey map to show your just two extremes with the von Eckonomo map, then you will easily see that here we have a lot of clearly differentiated cortical areas. And here, we have more or less a continuum of areas with the notable exception of the central region with the primary motor and premotor cortex and the primary somatosensory cortex. So what is the correct map? How to achieve reliable and reproducible maps of the human cerebral cortex independent of the experience of the observer? We think that quantification of the cytoarchet tonic features is a hallmark, because with quantification, science starts. That's what the physicists are thinking. And I think it's correct. The next thing is, the method should be automated, observer-independent, so that not the experience of the observer is an important part of the parcelation. Third point, the borders, which could be detected with quantified features and automatic measuring techniques, should be rigorously statistically tested to verify whether these borders are really existent. And a last point is the intersubject variability, which is huge in the human brain. And this should be respected in all brain maps. So how can we do that? We do it in the following way. A post-mortem brain is subjected to post-mortem MRI, as shown here. So we have two volumes, an original anatomical volume, shown in the photo here, and the volume reconstructed from the post-mortem MRI. Then this brain is embedded in paraffin and serial section. That means for a human brain, 6,000 to 8,000 sections at 20 micrometer thickness. That's what we do. You can see here the endless band of sections. Then we register after each section the block phase. I will explain why we do that. And after having mounted these 6,000 to 8,000 sections, they are stained for cell bodies. And then we can use the block phase images and the images of the sections for alignment, orientation, scaling, and 3D reconstruction of the histological volume. And finally, the histological volume is warped to the MR volume of the brain before histology, so that any distortions or defects or artifacts introduced by histology can be removed. So we can reconstruct the human brain as a model. And I think during the next few weeks, a paper will appear where we describe such a big brain model at the resolution of 20 micrometers. How can we do an automatic measurement? Here you see the cell body stained upper part of the human cerebral cortex. We segment the cell bodies, as shown here, and we measure the volume proportion of cell bodies compared with the space between the cell bodies, which is roughly the Neurapile. We call this measurement the GLI image. And the GLIs measured in measuring fields of just 20 to 20 micrometer size. Using this, for instance, here, we can parcelate the superior temporal gyrus. This is the superior temporal gyrus. This is part of the Heschel gyrus. This is the histological image. Then we transfer it into a GLI image, and we measure a profile of cell density from the surface of the cortex to the cortex-wide meta-border along this arrow. And then you can see the profile curve from this part of the cortex. Then we measure it at another part here, and you see the profile curve, which differs between here and here. And we use such profile curves in a sliding window-like technique. We acquire the profile curve, and we use the profile curve to test significant differences between position X and position Y in the cortex. And where we have such a different, significantly different cytoarchet tonic profile curve, there is a border. This roughly summarizes it, the GLI image. Then we produce profiles along these lines, vertical to the cortical surface. We measure the GLI profile curves, for instance, here and here. And then we define each profile curve as a feature vector and calculate the so-called Mahalanobis distance, which describes the difference in cytoarchet tonics between this curve and this curve. And then we can define statistically significant borders, for instance, here at position 33 of the measurement and at position 111 of the measurement. And then we can say that this is a cortical area, and in this case, this is Area 44 of Brokaw's region. So this observer-independent definition of cortical borders is then transferred to the images of the different 6,000 to 8,000 sections. And here you see some of the cortical areas labeled here in different colors. And the question is, at this point, do we really need new maps of the cerebral cortex since we have this wonderful pioneering map of Brodmann from 1909? I would like to summarize the objections against Brodmann's map. And the objections are the following. Brodmann's map is a schematic 2D drawing. It's not a realistic map. Second, he parcelated the cortex by an observer-dependent method of parcelation, which led to a long, long quarrel about the value of cytoarchet tonics, especially in the '40s and '50s of the 20th century. Another argument is Brodmann never mapped the cortical surface within the sulci. Since this surface is about 2/3 of the total cortical surface, Brodmann's map is really undefined within the sulci. Next argument, Brodmann's map does not list any inter-individual variability. This was not taken into account, and it's rarely taken into account in the classical cytoarchet tonic literature. And the last point is many functionally defined areas are missing, and some delineations are simply wrong. This is not to criticize this pioneering map 100 years before. This is just to list what are the arguments nowadays and why we run into difficulties in the '40s, '50s, and '60s. So how can we overcome this? I hope I could show you that we have a quantitative, statistically testable, and reliable method to do cytoarchet tonic mapping. And when we do this, we analyze as many brains as possible, and the brains are warped to a standard reference space or a standard reference brain like the MNI brain. And therefore, we do not present dogmatic maps with a single border. We present probabilistic maps, which give you an impression what is the probability to hit a certain cortical area in a well-defined voxel of the standard reference space or the standard reference brain. And we are doing this, this is still work in progress. We are doing this in the U-Brain project. And you can visit the website and see, for instance, the maximum probability maps of different cortical areas. And these areas have special functions, like the color perception area, like perception of moving visual stimuli, like language, like the control of behavior by the frontopolar region, control of movement by the motor cortex, control of tactile stimuli, perception of tactile stimuli, sorry, by the somatosensory cortex, face perception, word-form perception, evaluation of pleasant stimuli, evaluation of adversive stimuli, perception of visual stimuli, and so on and so on. So the cytoarchet tonic map is an indicator also of the functional segregation of the cortex. And to make it easy for the users, we have implemented all these maps in an anatomy toolbox in different frequently used software packages like SPM, AFNE, or FSL for functional imaging. So you have direct access to these maps. My second point, receptor archet tonics. That means the archet tonics of the cortex at the molecular level. Dr. Nadek has already wonderfully illustrated the different transmitter systems, ascending systems from the brainstem and the midbrain for dopamine, noradrenaline, serotonin, and acetylcholine. And I would like to add that glutamate and GABA, the major excitatory and inhibitory receptors, are ubiquitously expressed throughout the brain. And based on this scheme, we were interested in transmitter receptors. The receptors can be postsynaptic in the postsynaptic membrane, or they can be located presynaptic here in the membrane of the axonal buton. But the receptors are the decisive place where a transmitter acts. So the receptor defines whether a transmitter acts as an inhibitory signal or as an excitatory signal. Not the transmitter per se is inhibitory or excitatory. The receptor defines the action. And the receptors can have integrated ion channels, or they can be metabolotropic receptors, which are coupled via G proteins to the intracellular machinery. We can visualize such receptors, as we have done it here in a freeze fracture image. This is the presynaptic axonal buton, the ending of an axon in a synapse. And this is the postsynaptic dendritic spine. The presynaptic buton contains vesicles. And the vesicles contain the transmitters. And the transmitters is released into the synaptic cleft. And on the postsynaptic side, we have these bubbles. These are single protein complexes, the receptors. And we have labeled these receptors with nanoparticle conjugated antibodies. And so we can see the NMDA receptor subunit NR1 here, which is a glutamate receptor. And with a smaller nanoparticle, the AMPA receptor. What is the main message of this finding? The main message is that not only synapses have different receptors, but even within a single synapse, we have different receptors. So this is an enormous complexity of chemical neurotransmission. And how to visualize this? We have to take into consideration that a single cell can express at least four different glutamate receptors, different GABA receptors. The glutamate receptors are excitatory. The GABA receptors are inhibitory in the adult brain. Then, a single nerve cell can also express different colinergic receptors, nicotinic and different muscarinic receptors. And they can express dopamine receptors and noradrenaline receptors and serotonin receptors. And finally, adenosine receptors and 100 more receptors. We have selected these receptors listed here because they are the most abundant in the human cerebral cortex. And we have studied these 19 to 20 different receptors in each little region of the cortex. How can we do that? We block fresh frozen human brains, complete hemisphere on a microtome. These hemispheres are not fixed in any way. They are just natively deeply frozen. And then we cut 20 micrometer sections, which are melted on glass lights. This is a real difficult technique and requires technicians with a special psychology, because such a 20-micrometer section is like frozen water. 70% of such a section is simply water. And how to handle it? This requires a lot of skills and a lot of patience. Then these sections are incubated in radioactive solutions, which contains trisiated ligands for each specifically binding to each of the receptors I have listed before. Then the sections are exposed to beta-sensitive films, because the ligands are trisium labeled for three months approximately. Then the films are digitized, measured, quantificated, and color-coded. Now we can study in the serial sections, adjacent sections, alternating sections, all of the receptor I have shown you. And this looks like that. This is nearly the same site, the same level of a coronal section through a complete human hemisphere. And you see here the glutamaturgic receptors, just three examples, the muscarinic receptors, the nicotinic receptor, the noradrenaline, the GABA receptor, just one example, the serotonin receptors, the dopamine receptors, and so on. And when we go into more detail, for instance, here, the example of the colinergic muscarinic receptor type M2, then we can see here the central sulcus. And on this side, we see a very high density of this receptor. We can measure the density in femtamoles per milligram protein. And this is precisely the primary somatosensory cortex of the human brain. And when we look here and we see the Heschel gyrus, and again, a very high density of this receptor. And this is precisely the primary auditory cortex of the human brain. And here, the primary visual cortex, this is the calcarean sulcus, and again, a very high density of this receptor. So the muscarinic M2 receptor is a receptor which selectively labels by a very high concentration, primary sensory areas. So it's a tool to come into the organization and principles of cortical parcelation. What has the receptor distribution to do with cytoarchet tonics and myloarchet tonics? Just one example, the primary visual cortex again. This is the calcarean sulcus on the coronal section. This is Janari stripe, which starts and ends at the beginning and the end of the primary visual cortex. Here, the secondary visual cortex starts. And the same here in the cytoarchet tonic image. And this is the distribution of the inhibitory GABA receptor. And you can clearly see that this receptor is highly concentrated in layers 2 to 4A. Green is the Janari stripe, with a relative low concentration of this inhibitory receptor. And red is layer 4C, the primary target of the afferent fibers from the geniculate body, especially the power cellular pathway. And this has again a very high density of this receptor. And you see that layer 4C stops here, exactly where the Janari stripe stops, or the cytoarchitecture changes abruptly, and it stops here, precisely here. So the receptor distribution, the cytoarchitecture and the myloarchitecture are the different sides of a coin and teach us about the organization of the cortex. The interesting thing is that there is a very small sector where we have very high density of the GABA receptor in the upper layers and nothing in layer 4C. And this small sector between the primary visual cortex here and the secondary visual cortex here is exactly the representation of the vertical meridian of our visual field. So the receptor distribution is not just a structure. It tells us somebody also about the functional organization of the cortex. Another example is the hippocampus. Here we have the excitatory AMPA receptor, and you see that the density is very high in the molecular layer of the dentate and in the CA1, CA2, and CA3 region of the ammun's horn. These are two synaptic places. First, the molecular layer is the first synaptic station. The perforant pass comes in here from the entorhinal cortex, and it's connected with the granular cells of the dentate. Then the second synaptic station is here in the CA3 region. These are the axons of the granular cells, which have a synapsis as mossy fibers with the pyramidal cells of the CA3 region. And the last synaptic station is in CA1. These are the Shaffer collaterals, which have a synapse on the pyramidal cells of CA1. And the NMDA receptor shows And the NMDA receptor shows a similar situation with the notable exception that CA3 and CA2 have only a moderate density of the receptors. The most surprising thing is the specificity of the glutamaturgic kinase receptor, which is precisely restricted to the second glutamaturgic synapse station, the mossy fiber synapsis in the helus and the CA3 region of the hippocampus. So with the help of receptors, we can also study synaptic stations in the organization of the human brain. A last example is here, the Broca's region with area 44 and 45, as classically demonstrated by, already by Brodman. But when we study the receptors and compare the different receptors from the very same brain, from the very same site in coronal sections, and here you see the glutamaturgic kinase receptor and the glutamaturgic NMDA receptor, then we will find that areas 44 and 45 are only a rough estimate of the organization. There are much more areas in Broca's region. Here, the inhibitory GABA receptor from the very same side, the GABA B receptor and the muscarinic M3 receptor, and the nicotinic and the serotoninergic 5-HT1A and the noradrenergic alpha-2 receptor. And when we put together all this information into a map, then we found out that Broca's region must be subdivided into more than 12 different areas. And these different areas can be very well compared in the standard reference space with functional imaging. And so we have, for instance, an area for grammatical tasks, we have an area for semantic tasks, we have an area for prosody, and so on and so on. And suddenly, linguistic arguments come together with cytoarchitecture, with myloarchitecture, and even with the molecular organization of the human speech region. The receptors, the different receptors in one region can be visualized in polar coordinate plots. So we can, for instance, register the AMPA, glutamaturgic AMPA receptor density in the primary motor cortex, then the kinase, the NMDA, and so on. And when we connect these different measuring points, then we have a figure which we call the receptor fingerprint of an area. The shape of this fingerprint is very specific for the modality, the function, in for the organization of an area. If you compare, for instance, the receptor fingerprint of all these receptors in the primary motor cortex with the receptor fingerprint in the hippocampus, you can immediately see that the hippocampus differs from the primary motor cortex by the very high 5-HD1A serotonin receptor density, by a much higher AMPA receptor density, and even higher NMDA receptor density, and so on. It's interesting that the NMDA receptor is expressed at a much higher level in the hippocampus than in the primary motor cortex, since the NMDA receptor plays an important role in long-term potentiation, a model for learning and memory in the brain. When we compare cortical areas of different modalities, for instance, the primary somatosensory with the primary motor and the primary auditory and the primary visual cortex, then we can see that the receptor fingerprints are modality-specific. That means the neurotransmission for a very specific modality is of great importance for the balance between the different receptors in the different areas. Also, the cortical layers, different by their receptor fingerprints, with the highest number of the receptors in layers 2 to 3 and the lowest in the deeper layer of 6. If we take these receptor fingerprints as vectors and calculate a cluster analysis, for instance, for the human cingulate cortex, then the organizational principle of the cingulate cortex is apparent, with the anterior cingulate cortex, which is important for cognitive functions, for instance, with area 25, which belongs topographically to the anterior cingulate cortex, but neurochemically to another part of the cortex, and this area 25 is very important in cases of depression, and so on. And we can also calculate a hierarchical cluster analysis of the complete human cortex, and we will see that the receptor fingerprints indicate functional differences like the dorsal visual stream for object localization in space, and differentiate these group of cortical areas from the groups of the ventral stream which are responsible for object shape recognition and so on. So shortly to my last point, and this is also a transition to the next talk by Dr. Schmarman, fibers and fiber tracks and the connectome. You know that we have this wonderful technique of diffusion-weighted imaging to visualize fiber tracks by directed water diffusion in MRI. The problem with this technique is that it has a restricted spatial resolution. So we thought about a different possibility. And the possibility which I would like to show you is brand-new, although it's an old technique. I remembered that polarization optics, polarization microscopy, is very good to visualize the biofringency properties of myelin. And what you see here is a horizontal section through a human brain. And when we put this section into a polarization equipment, here is the section, this is the polarizer, this is the lambda quarter plate, the analyzer, this is the light, and this is a video camera, then we can see that depending on the direction of the polarized light, there is higher or lower brightness in the cortex. And when we measure these changes in brightness, when we measure at this point, then you see the amplitude is changing depending on the direction of the polarized light. When we measure at this point, then we have the same amplitude but the different phase of brightness and darkness at this point in the white matter. When we measure at a place where the myelin density is low, then the amplitude is low. And when we measure in the cortex, there is less myelin than in the white matter, so the amplitude is very low. So this is the measuring principle, and this principle allows to define the direction of myelinated fibers. And the result is this: these are myelinated fibers in the human visual cortex. And here you see the genary stripe, here you see the white matter. Green means the fibers go from right to left, red means the fibers go, the fibers go from the upper part to the lower part of this image. When we go into higher magnification, then we have here the white matter, the genary stripe, and you see even single myelinated fibers. And to illustrate this, I would like to show you a video from the primary visual cortex of the human brain, and you can see in this video, single myelinated fibers and their direction within the cortex and also in the white matter at a resolution of 1 micrometer in plane. And the last video gives you an impression what resolution does. We start at a resolution of 1,000 microns, 1 millimeter, which is even better than most of the diffusion-weighted images, and then we end up at a resolution of 1 micrometer. And we look into the white matter of the temporal stem. So now we are 200 microns, 100 micron. Now we target on the temporal stem. These are the vectors giving the direction of the fibers. And this globe gives you the color coding of the direction of the fibers. The ROI has 4 to 4 to 4 millimeter size, and at the end you can see single myelinated fibers, for instance, here in a very complex matter, here and here, interwoven in the temporal stem. I hope I could give you an impression of this new technique of fiber tracking at extremely high resolution of 1 micrometer. Thank you for your attendance.